Look like you. Okay, welcome to the planning board meeting and the last planning board meeting for 2023. Happy holidays to everybody. Please stand for the pledgeable agents. We have a few decisions we're gonna get out of the way right away. BMB Enterprises, 145 Main Street. Barry, will you waive reading of the decision?
Yes, I do, but I have some questions if I may ask them.
I guess we can do that before we.
You wanna snatch it from the joke? Like, you really wanna ask questions?
No.
Okay.
Well done. I make a motion, we accept the resolution as written. All in favor? WHBH Real Estate LLC, 7 Beach Lane. Anybody here for the applicant? Waive reading? I make a motion that we waive the reading and accept the decision as written.
Second.
All in favor? We'll begin site plan reviews for Gables of West Hampton Beach, LTD. It's not on the agenda. Anybody here for the applicant? Will you waive the reading? I need a motion to accept the decision as written.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Okay, now we can go back to site plan.
Okay. Gables.
For the applicant, James Enium, 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach.
Happy holidays, Mr. Enium.
Happy holidays to you as well. Over the last couple of weeks, we've submitted a number of things in response to discussions from the last meeting that we had relative to this. Not wanting to bury the lead, the one of the important things is that we did get our temporary septic approval, which we have submitted. And I would just remind you that although it's temporary in the sense that it's not the full system, but it's not a situation where we're putting in a temporary septic system and then we're gonna take that out and putting in a full system, it is in fact one component of the entire system. And this authorizes the temporary, the smaller system is approved for. The other thing we submitted was an updated site plan. It didn't really change the the overall site plan details to any great extent, but it did provide a little bit more detail concerning the the walking path that was proposed and the construction details on that. And then it also included a modified phasing plan, which, if I can find it, divided divides the phasing of the project into now four components. The Phase One has been divided into a Step One and a Step One A. And the Step One involves the construction of the first eight units pursuant to the septic approval. Step B, 1B, is the balance of the first phase as shown on that plan after the full septic system has been approved and installed. We're expecting a month or so for the full system to be approved. But no reason to think that it won't happen at all. And I think those were the the big items. We'd talked about the park fee in the past, the calculation of the park fee, the valuation that we were basing it on, and other like items. So.
Did we work out incremental payment of that park fee?
Uh, I, we haven't. You know, one thing that occurred to me is that perhaps a portion, a quarter, a portion of the park fee can be paid just before the onset of each phase. And I think there's effectively four phases, so by the start, by the time the fourth phase commenced, then the park fee would be paid.
And we're not issuing any COs until it's complete, right?
We haven't worked out the CO structure that's usually in resolution that's certain public convergence or in this case private.
Does any applicant have a suggestion as far as COs and?
As far as COs and what?
And the park fee.
Well, actually, what I suggested is independent of that, but if you wanna tie it into the COs, that's that works as well, but same increments, I guess.
I, I mean, I don't know. The board doesn't mind his suggestion about the quarter, 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 quarter. Is that what you're saying?
Quarter, quarter, yeah.
Right? So paying it one quarter at a time just prior to each phase?
Yeah.
That seems like a, not a bad solution.
You should be ahead of us then.
Right, yeah, so by the time we, before we start the fourth phase of the project, we will have paid the park fee in full.
Issue with the COs, just that we have to give a little thought, I think. And this is something maybe Brad and I can work. It's kind of what we did with Beechwood is that you wanna make sure that before the COs are issued for particular units, at least everything is safe for that, those particular COs. So we're gonna have to maybe just have an offline conversation about how to phase that or give you rights to to start pulling COs, provided that certain conditions are met for those units. But I assume you don't wanna wait till the, every unit is built to pull COs?
We want the people coming into unit number one.
Exactly. So if you have a, you know, a plan for that, we can sort of work on that between now and the decision so that the conditions in the decision will allow you to pull COs, but only provided that everything is safe for those occupants and units, okay?
You're isolating whatever other construction.
Right, and I think, other than the septic system itself, Phase One is the west end of the project.
The west end?
Yeah, so the first occupants will be coming in off of, off of.
So it should facilitate that, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Right.
Correct. But we can, you know, we can certainly work on some conditions to make sure that that's, in fact, the case.
You might wanna take, if you wanna take a look at Beechwood and see if the way we structured that might have to be modified a little bit for your multi-units, but something like that may work.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
With respect to the landscape planners, maybe you wanna look at it from the constructive side. And when I mentioned my house first, I have all varieties. The deers are destroying them. So this is where the question comes in. With the plantings that are here, are they resistant to deers?
That's a good question.
And I, I think it's.
We'll have to.
At my house, they've done some major damage. I burlapped all my bushes last weekend. I'm, I'm late already, because they beat on them last year. The reason I'm bringing it up is you're spending a fortune with this planting schedule. Are you putting out food for the deer is my question?
Well, yeah, I mean.
You know, because what's gonna happen is they're just gonna, they're gonna come in and devour them.
I, I struggle to find any variety that they don't eat. But yes, it's a thoughtful comment that we should think about.
Yeah, I mean.
All of the evergreens, in my experiences, they find a way to eat them regardless of your, you know, the provider tells you that they're deer resistant.
Yeah, well, it's, I'm just asking the question because they like some plants better than others.
Yep.
And.
Well, I would say.
They like just to stay looking nice.
From my own perspective and my own home, we planted a form of Iberviti called the Green Giant.
Yeah.
And so far, they have been.
They tend to stay away from them.
If you look at the variety they select, the dunes, they have a very similar berm landscape as to what we're trying to accomplish along Montauk Highway. I haven't seen that they, they, those were impacted by the deer. We can see. Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Constructive comments to think about before you, before you.
Spend a lot of money.
Put a plan like this out on, on the ground, that's like, hey, they're not gonna come in winter, they're destroyed.
Yeah.
We'll take a look at that.
So just, just a comment.
Appreciate it.
So anything else from our illustrious crew?
Detail for the woodchuck walk. I had asked them to also show us something about the benches that are indicated and to call them out because they see the rectangles, but I don't see.
Yeah, there are benches on the plan, but you'd like to know what the benches are gonna look like.
The other thing is you, on the, I think it's the second page of landscape plan, you have blowups of the.
Have we done?
Each unit's planting around the unit. And I'd like to see that, that path and how that's gonna look in that blowup. I think, you know, it's, the board has a pretty good idea now what, what you're proposing.
All right, now nobody will provide those.
If that's what we're gonna do, I'd like to make sure it's on the plan.
Sure.
Haven't looked at the estimate yet, but that'll somewhat be keyed in with the phasing plan, which I'll look over.
Yeah, and those I imagine are details for the final resolution anyway.
Yeah, it's you're on it, well, even the Phase One, but the thing, I read it, it puts a sanitary line all the way down to the sewer plant, so all I'm gonna wanna see at least some asphalt covering that, you know, that road to be that, first coat, not, not top coat.
Okay, I'm sure we can, yeah, I'm sure we can.
It may be already on, I just want.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Brian about that.
I saw the estimate came in yesterday.
We're happy to talk about that, but that being the case, we're hoping to get, stop having a big empty dirt pile and doing some work. What do, what do we need to get our building inspector to allow us to do some work?
Oh, he's allowed you to do some work already.
Right, more work.
You want more?
I think we're talking in terms of the foundations. Talking about.
You know, according by Swift, we had a lot of earth to put stuff into the pile. It took about a couple of weeks before that was supposed to be seeded, so it doesn't flow around all getting laid. I'm not sure if that's gonna help it.
Yeah, if we wait a couple of months, a couple of weeks, it'll probably freeze, but we'll, I don't, I don't know if that's happened or not, but.
The point is, it's according to Swift's requirement that, you know, that be done, it hasn't been done.
We will do it.
So what about foundations?
I think foundations are part of, at least are some of the residential approvals.
Yeah. I don't see how we, I don't see how we can justify it. But, I mean, I've said that before, without an actual approval. I just don't see how, you can justify site work, you can justify some other things, but building actual units that haven't been approved yet, and they haven't. And, and part of the problem is when you, there are conditions that are gonna be attached to this decision.
Right.
And if the applicant starts building before the conditions have even been considered by the applicant, it then becomes a very strange situation if they don't like the conditions, so.
Well, that's true.
You know, we, we gotta, like, there's a reason why it has to be a certain step by step.
No foundations?
Okay, so can we put this over for the next, what, what's a reasonable?
Well, drainage, normal site work, no.
Is there anything that we can start now? I mean, the drainage is obviously not gonna move.
Depending on the resolution, so.
What do we have?
Next enough.
Well, I think it's gonna be, the park fee is going to be part of the final decision. And I think we got to a month ago or so where we were satisfied with their calculations, but I don't know from the consultants whether the plan was satisfactory, because at the time.
Just ask for a couple of little things. These are minor. And as long as, you know, the plan is delivered before we make the decision, I, I think that's all right, because it's very minor changes. Definitely, we have discussion now about what the vegetation is, that, I guess, could be changed before the decision can be made. It could be, as long as the plan gets in here before we do the decision and it's changed, you know, that's, we should be okay.
So we've got a couple more layers before we can issue a decision. So we'll put you over to the January 11th meeting, and then hopefully you'll have all of those issues resolved in between now and then. Obviously.
Okay, so we're looking at, we need to respond to the deer resistant nature of the.
It was just a constructive comment, not meant to hold anything up.
A detail on the benches. And some more detail on the path on the.
Yeah, but that, those are mine, I think that.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't rule out that there, there'd be a decision at the next meeting.
But it seems like some, some wording on, on conditions and that kind of stuff that has to be worked out, which isn't playing.
Can you and Anthony?
I can.
I don't know about that part. Yeah, I'm not worried about, I'm not worried about that part. Just a question about whether they could go forward with some site work. In the past, the, the board's approved some site work. I don't know how far you wanna go with it. I, I definitely would draw the line at buildings.
We're gonna go beyond what we really have scope to do without a resolution. I mean, obviously, putting in drainage, putting in foundations, all of that, you know, sort of has to wrap into the resolution.
Yes, it does, but in the past, you have sometimes taken a resolution, an oral resolution, to allow some preliminary work to start before the formal resolution, written resolution has been done.
So we do.
No, I'm not, I'm not taking a position on how far you should or shouldn't go, other than buildings and foundation work is a, something you've never done before. And I think that's going too far, but wherever you wanna draw the line in terms of site work.
Well, Brad, do you have a line to draw?
I feel like we've spent time with this and we're close enough to work on the resolution of approving. So that's where I think it's, it's safe just to go so we can put these realistic conditions in, get the park fee, get, and get all our permits placed.
So I guess the, the bottom line is you cooperating with Brad and Anthony in the time we have between now and that meeting. It's possible that if you can persuade them that you've conformed to what we need, that you'll have a resolution at the 11th.
Okay. Well, that's what.
That's fair to say.
All right. Thank you.
So I need a motion to hold over the application until January 11th?
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, of course.
Gonna reopen it so that.
I reopen, yes. Are we okay with that, Megan?
Anne Smalley, Patio Villas, 27 Brittany Lane. I'm just wondering, those first eight units, are they the ones that would back up directly along the Patio Villa fence line?
No.
Where, where would they be on the west end?
Further south.
So on your Montauk Highway? Your Montauk Highway?
So.
So south of the access road?
South?
The entrance. The entrance egress. And will there be any construction egress coming in from Riverhead Road, or will it all be coming in from Depot?
I anticipate that there's construction trucks going from both.
Okay, so it's not all coming in from Depot Road?
Construction entrances on Montauk Highway.
Okay, good. That's it. Thank you.
Please.
Lots of points and vegetation. I think that's a crucial aspect of it. There are. Say your name and address. Oh, sure, John Stanek, 250 Mill Road, West. So there are things you can use to keep the deer at bay. Vegetation deer don't eat. Usually, generally, they're more expensive than other things commercial builders like to use. So it's something I think we should really take a good look at. It's in five, 10, 15 years from now. We don't wanna, we want it to be a pleasing sight. And if the deer hammer it, like they do in many properties, visually, it's, it's visual pollution at that time. So I, I think that's a great point you brought up, and I think that should be in resolution if we go forward. Not just this project, but other projects going forward.
Well, we've had good results, if you've noticed, on all of the applications that have been approved and built out. So, you know, I don't anticipate this applicant taking a different path.
Okay, yeah, but you.
Because they do have to guarantee their landscaping also.
What, what does that mean?
That means, for instance, the one across the street from the Tonino's has planted multiple times to take out plants that didn't survive. And if you look at that project, which is very similar to this one from a landscape standpoint, we've had good success there.
Is it just surviving, or we just, it could be alive and been veering up for.
No, it's not just surviving, it's actually aesthetic. What turns out happening is the owners, when they come into a project like this, take a great deal of leadership and stuff like that. They have a board there that takes very good care of their landscaping and their infrastructure to support it.
I haven't guaranteed that.
With a bond.
So the, the village would.
There will be a bond, yes.
You know, keep in mind, it's, it's not our intent to create a life on the village. I mean.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking to create a nice community that people wanna live in.
Yeah.
And.
Well, I, I think I've made that clear to him.
It's pretty many deals. Probably the best interest of our partner.
But you just look at the, the writing that's for, if they, everything they wanted, you know, yeah. So it doesn't look as good as it did when it first went in. So unless it's nearly, it's a stipulation in five, 10 years.
It's bonded. It's not just a stipulation, it's bonded. So in order to get their money back, they have to satisfy the conditions we put in for that bond.
So, but when, when does the bond get paid?
I think it gets instituted as part of the final resolution, yeah.
So like five years, seven years, 10 years from now, we have any control?
Do we have an estimate?
They just said, I have a little.
Yeah, there, there's a couple of aspects. Aside from the bond resolution, I don't think.
So there's covenants or restrictions and an approved site plan from this board that shows landscaping buffer, what have you. That's, that, the site plan is only in compliance if that exists. So if there's, there's buffering or there's trees and they're dying, that's their property owner is not in compliance with their site plan if they don't replace those trees. If you all remember the three-story Metro Storage Building, they had some large trees that were relocated, and we had to watch, and a couple of them didn't make it, and we made them replace. They make them put 30-foot trees up, but they brought, you know, 16, 18-foot trees to replace the ones that died. So that, that is still a hook that we have in enforcement.
That happened with Timber Ridge, too?
Yep.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
By the way, that kind of reminds, the issue of bonding needs to be included in the resolution, too, which also feeds into all this. So Ron said, you just got it?
He's got the estimate.
So make sure if he gets comments back on that, everything's turned around quickly so that it's ready for 11th, because if that's not ready.
Okay, once again, we're gonna hold over the application until the 11th. Thank you, gentlemen. 32 Mill Road LLC. I'm heading that way myself.
Before I begin, I'm Anthony Correll on behalf of 32 LLC. Coyote urine, pH, anything away from white flowers, and it really does keep the deer away. And it's on natural. And then there's Bobex, but that's a little expensive, but it works. Anyhow, to quote Planning Board Commissioner Newbauer, I'm enthusiastic to get this off the agenda. So.
Welcome back.
Over the last 10 or so weeks, we have proceeded diligently with what we believe to satisfy all of the open requirements that the board has requested. We've cured any and all open violations that may have been existed. We've closed down the operation. We've had the inspections. We've gotten wastewater approval. We've gotten food approval. You gave an approval to hold off for a renewed resolution, I believe, this evening. And so I would respectfully request that such a resolution put and approval be granted.
I don't think we're prepared to render.
We don't have a resolution this evening, but.
I was reading back, Mr. Pasca, and, and I think you're right. You had said that a resolution would be formulated, I believe, today.
Usually what we have, what we do is when an application hasn't been in front of us for a few months, we go over the status, we make sure everything is ready for the resolution, and then the board will direct us to go ahead and prepare the resolution.
Okay, well, we are prepared for whatever next steps you all direct us.
So are there any open, I think, ask the three consultants if there are any open issues?
We're good, right? Love to hear it. So I don't, I don't.
Other than giving the public an opportunity to be heard, it seems like it's ready for a resolution at the next meeting.
Anybody on the application wanna be heard? Okay. I make a motion, we direct the staff to prepare the resolution.
Second.
January 11th meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you on January 11th.
I will be here. I thank the board.
You can close the public hearing, too, by the way.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing on the topic?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Landmark Mill LLC Starbucks.
Good evening, or good afternoon, I guess it's good evening. Mr. Newbauer, members of the planning board, my name is Anthony Guardino, partner with the law firm of Farrell Fritz and Hopg, representing Landmark Mill LLC, which owns the property at 193-195 Mill Road. And they are seeking, as you know, to redevelop the property with a 2,345-square-foot, 16-seat Starbucks coffee shop with associated site improvements. I have with me Chuck Dietz, the project architect from Dietz Partnership. Zach Chaplin is also here. If the board has any questions about the site plan, he is with Stonefield Engineering. And of course, Jordan Libowitz, who is a member of Landmark Mill LLC, is in the back. So I'm just gonna be very brief and just kind of bring the board up to speed as to, you know, where we've been since we were last here. So we started this process in September. We first introduced the application at a work session. We received some feedback from the board at that time and from the planning department and the traffic consultant. And then there was another work session in October. And we then presented modified plans for the board's consideration, and I think the board's reaction was somewhat favorable, like I said, more like we're getting warmer, had more comments and, and, and suggestions. The applicant then went back to the drawing board, made some further modifications. Then there was a public hearing held on the 9th of November, and we presented the modified plans, and those modifications shifted the building slightly to eliminate the need for a variance from the zoning board. It altered the materials of the facade, modified the architecture. One of the most important things was to reorient the building to, so the front is facing Mill, and then they added a side entrance facing School Street. And also, there were some improvements made to the back of the building, which is facing the parking lot, so it looks more like a front or a second, second front. And then there was some change, other changes made to the building, some landscaping improvements as well to the south side of the, the building that faces School Street. Also, there were some additional landscaping added in the, on the backside. This, the applicant went to the ARB last week, and I was not there. The, the architect presented, and the principal presented to the ARB. And then following that hearing, we did receive a favorable memo, basically saying that they were okay with the proposed changes, or I guess they said they were comfortable with the materials and landscaping that was proposed. And then recently, yesterday, we received a copy of a memo from Mr. Hammond, who noted that the seeker status of this as being a type two and not requiring any further review. And then also referencing some potential conditions of approval. I did discuss those with my client, and they're all fine. They're perfectly acceptable. And then finally, we received also a memo from Mr. Hill, the traffic consultant, and he had some, made some requests for some additional technical information and proposed or suggested some modifications to the site to further improve it, which I've discussed with my client, and he's fine with that as well. So at this point, I don't really have much else to say, where I do. So at this point, I don't really have much else to say, where I do have Chuck here, I don't know if you want to hear from them again, him and from the site engineer, but if not, you know, we would respectfully request maybe that the council be directed to draft the decision as well. We've been here, I guess, about four months, and I think, I think we're pretty much there, I hope. I hope the board feels the same way.
So we're just going to, for the corrections you've asked for?
Look at them, they've done everything, and I don't, they're minor, they're kind of minor.
Brad?
Yeah, just the one thing I wanted to look at was, well, on the last plan, there was a survey showing two rights away that needs to be extinguished, so I hope that's not an issue, title wise, because that would be right through the building, but it looks like they were for joint access for the two parcels. And I was thinking that that sidewalk should be extended along the side of, well, what is effectively School Street, not that it would pinch you School Street, but that come around the corner, give a little more texture for people walking in from that side. Other than that, it's just approvals from the other agencies.
Brendan, anything from you?
No, they addressed all the architectural and writing comments that we had previously with their submission.
Okay.
Nothing further. Do you have any questions?
I don't think we need any of your experts tonight.
I think that's good. Means we've done a good job.
I haven't seen the back of the building, the revised drawing.
Well, I think we've addressed, it can look like the front of the building.
Yeah. You have a copy of that? For some reason, I haven't seen it. Just wanted to take a look.
Thank you.
I didn't want him to think he's wasting his time carrying that up here. Yes. You've got one.
He's been leaving earlier. This is part of the submissions, Charles Dietz, each part of it. Some reason I have, maybe I missed it. So you've done a rendering from the front that I believe you've all seen before? Yeah, it looks a lot better. Rendering of the rear. Because I haven't seen this, I don't know if you guys have.
Well, we've got digital copies, yeah.
I've got so much email, maybe I missed it.
Yep, yeah. It'd be good. Seating out this.
Thank you.
Doesn't appear to be any.
Definitely improvement.
Going to come in from the.
From the last.
The process works.
Yeah, well, you know, it just looked like, it looked like the back of a building.
Absolutely.
You know, and this, this is, this is big improvement.
Yeah.
Now, that has access in through the Gable Inn on the, on the east?
Yes, on Mill and then the side on School, the Gable Inn.
And is there, there were seating out on the south side previously shown, is that?
That was removed, and then we just have that plaza that we could look for possible seasonal seating at some point later on in the future. Well, that was removed from the drive. Thank you.
I think it looks good, huh?
Yeah.
Does anybody from the public like to speak on this topic? Please come up and identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Shelley Schwartz, and I live at the buoy, which is 221 Mill Road. I'm very concerned about the traffic, and I don't understand how the traffic has been approved. Can someone explain it to me? Because I haven't been to any previous meetings, and it sounds as though you're going ahead with this.
The applicant did a traffic study, and our engineer examined the traffic study and agreed with the results of the traffic study.
Okay, but they haven't been out here in the summer when you can't get on to that?
Arguably, some of the applicant's experts haven't, and this board has made it clear, and I'll say it again, you couldn't have picked a worse spot in the village, in my opinion, but.
Yeah.
The fact of the matter is, the applicant has rights and has followed the traditional traffic study requirements, and those have satisfied our building department and engineer, and we're there.
So nobody from the village itself did a traffic study, they went on?
No, we actually, we actually have a traffic study from the applicant, and our.
It's their paperwork, not ours. Okay.
There's nothing that jumps out at us, we're only talking about 16 seats in this facility.
Yeah.
There is no drive-through window.
And parking places, there are 16. Do we know how many?
There's more than that. 16.
Sixteen, sixteen, so I mean, how many parking spots?
You have to address your questions to the board.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'll take it. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Anybody else? Please come up and identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Martha Wickline, I'm also at the buoy at 221 Mill Road. What are the hours of operation going to be for the building?
Will the applicant respond to that?
Five thirty to ten, yeah.
So there's going to be lights on 24 hours, or will lights go out at 10 o'clock? Are there going to be any, like, lights lighting the parking lot that are going to be shining up into our?
Well, first, let me say that there are laws in the village, we have dark sky law.
Okay.
This building is fully dark sky compliant, so you won't have anything shining at your facility, at your buildings that, that's for sure.
Okay.
And whatever lighting at night during times of closure will be minimal, I'm sure. So, you know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and I know Shelley already mentioned it, but you can't get out of the buoy, you know, from Memorial Day through October 1st.
Right there with you.
The traffic coming is.
Every resident that's spoken has said the same thing.
Exactly. I mean, I can't see around the cars that will park where they're not supposed to park, because that's what people do. You can't see around them to get out, and it's, you know, it's going to add a lot more traffic to that area.
The only thing that you can do makes it the site make a right turn, go into the circle. They come in off the driveway into the village hall, that's their entrance, they go through, park, when they come out, they can only make a right turn. Their entrance is right by, you know, a little bit.
The village entrance.
Yes, I understand that, but they're still coming from all directions to get there.
So they go through the traffic circle?
Or come down Mill Road.
Well, they may come down Mill Road.
Yeah. Which is where all the beach traffic is coming from, inner.
A lot of the traffic is what we call bypass, traffic that's on the road. People stop by because they're driving by. It's almost half of their traffic, traffic story in there.
Okay, well, I'm sorry that it's gone this far, and I was unaware that it was happening, and I guess there's just no way to stop it, but we have a local merchant across the street, we have plenty of coffee shops in town, and I'm just really sorry that it's happening in this town. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Pilar, I live on 255 Mill Road, same side of the street where this Starbucks is supposed to be going in. That side of the street's always been residential, and I live on a flag lot, it's very hard, especially in the summer, coming off that street. Again, I'm going to talk about the traffic and ask, from my understanding, the traffic survey was not done here in West Hampton, it was done in the town of Southampton, near the Starbucks, is, am I correct? And that, was it done here?
They, they, what you do when you look at a study is you find out how much traffic the new building is going to generate. And that study, generation, was, they use the IT, which is the nationally accepted reference that tells you how much traffic any new use may generate. We also had them key in with the Southampton store, based on receipts to see how that would compare with the South.
So my understanding is then?
Let him, let him, you got to let him finish the answer, you can't ask a question and not let someone finish, please.
What is, what it's going to generate, also the IT talked about bypass and how much traffic is either already there or new generation, and it gave us the numbers we can expect.
So the survey was not done here in West Hampton during, during the time of the summer where it's busy, or in a busy school zone? It was not?
Until they build the Starbucks in West Hampton, you can't do a study.
Well, there's a school zone here, there's not a school zone near the one in Southampton.
You're about, you're about the same distance away from the elementary school.
Okay. Well, again, I, if for some reason there is a traffic issue, this becomes an issue, what is your plan to address that? How are you guys going to?
Well, I think we've taken into consideration everything we can legally to mitigate the traffic. I mean, certainly making, certainly making a one-way in and one-way out. They wanted to have both on Mill Road, okay? I mean, that was one step we took. Certainly not having a drive-through, certainly not having any more than 16 seats. I mean, those are all part of a mitigation plan, try to keep whatever traffic we can out of there.
About, what about the foot traffic with young students and kids crossing the street from the high school and the middle school? How's, are you going to put in additional crossing guard? Like, how's that going to work? Because you know the kids are going to do that.
We expect that.
And, and that's.
That has been considered.
Heavily trafficked, and the more kids crossing it, the higher the risk of something occurring. It's dangerous. So, I mean, I just want to make my thoughts heard.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else want to speak?
I'm not sure if the residents of the village are aware, some things happen quite often without the residents realizing it, especially as people have been saying about the Starbucks. The Hampton Arts Movie Theater is being renovated to turn into a first-run movie, movie theater? Is that correct?
Yes.
Has that traffic that that would bring about been considered along with a traffic study, based on the school traffic, Mill Road traffic, summer resident traffic, and now movie theater traffic, all around that circle?
The Planning Board is charged with looking at all those aspects, and frankly, the renovation of the movie theater isn't going to generate any more traffic than it had when it was in its heyday. So there's really, I don't think there's going to be any circumstance that creates additional load on that area.
That movie theater hasn't been in its heyday for about 15 or 20 years.
The traffic is going to increase here, there's nothing we can do about that. Owners have rights to property, just like everybody else, and we do everything we can from an engineering standpoint and from an examination standpoint that we can do. Our hands are literally tied. There is going to be expansion here, and I've got to be frank with you, when I first joined the Planning Board many years ago, my goal was to stop development in this village. And I've come to realize that that's just not reality, that we have a certain amount of construction that we are going to see, and there are going to be increases in traffic. And as our village is more attractive to people, thanks to our mayor, more traffic is going to come. And we do that to encourage the businesses, not discourage the businesses.
One more question, if people are coming up Mill Road from, let's say, where the post office is, and they want to go to Starbucks, is the entrance going to be off the traffic circle, or will they be going north or west of the traffic circle a little bit, and then maybe making U-turn to come back around and go into the Starbucks park?
We have, we have double yellow lines there, and we have enforcement. And I've got to be frank with you, I've seen a great step up in enforcement with the recent police administration on Mill Road in particular. So I've got imminent faith that people won't be pulling illegal U-turns, and I think that the traffic situation that we've developed with the applicant is the best possible outcome for egress and exiting.
So will it be off the traffic circle?
It'll be on schools, what's technically School Street.
Not School Lane, but School Street.
Right. Does anybody else want to speak on the application? Okay, I need a motion to authorize the.
My question is.
I beg your pardon?
We're, we're on the new, the new procedures for public hearings, so.
Okay, close them.
You feel the, the public's had a reasonable opportunity to be heard, first motion would be to close the public hearing.
Okay. Need a motion to close the public hearing on the application.
I make the motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to entertain a motion to advance the application predicated on what we've heard tonight, and authorize Planning Board to receive whatever information has got to be addressed, and be attorney to render a decision.
Draft a decision.
Draft a decision. I'll render the decision.
I render decisions, I just help draft them.
I, I need the motion.
I make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And again, I still think it's a bad idea to be up on Montmore Kylie, you guys, I don't know what you think of it. This fill application is the one we just approved? Or is this another fill?
Let's just move clear for a second. You handled that well.
I will see you if you have, I will see you. You'll be here too.
I'll see you later.
Ira Mitsner, 127 Jessup Lane, we've got a fill application. Anybody here for the applicant? Need motion to hold the application over until January?
Make the motion.
All in favor? Going to work sessions? How are you? Happy holidays.
Good evening, happy holidays. Frank Lombardo, architect for the Hampton Synagogue, by Mark here as well. Let's start with a little bit of background first, for the benefit of those who don't know the project. The original site plan was approved in December of 2022. We had a campus plan with three buildings, a parish house, which is a residential, a poolhouse, comfort station, which is accessory to all of the facilities that we have, we have a pool, basketball court, and so on, so. And also a mikva pavilion, which is the religious entity of this entire set. When I appeared before you on May 11th, I, I requested a modification of the site plan. Reason being, we wanted to phase the project in phases because of available funds to build the entire project. That was approved on the 25th of May. Since then, we completed Phase One. In your package, you'll see some photographs, it shows you what we, what we've done to the site. And we basically have all of our sign-offs in place, the only thing we're missing is the certificate of. The only thing we're missing, uh, is the certificate of occupancy. But Brad's made all the inspections there, and the only reason we haven't filed for it is because we were waiting for the automatic driveway gates for the ingress and egress, the vehicular ingress, to be installed. That's happening now. Uh, we, we have our Department of Health approvals, electrical approvals, everything. So we should be, you should be seeing, uh, Brad, you should be seeing an application for the CO within the next week. So why am I here? Okay. I'm appearing, appearing in front of you for another modification of site plan to remove the residential component of the project, the parish house itself. And to take the mikva pavilion, which was located on the northwest quadrant of the site and shift it along Brook Road, which is where it was, to the northeast quadrant of the site to kind of consolidate the site. Keep it near, uh, the poolhouse so that we can take advantage of services, uh, that we have. The rest of that site, which as part of the, uh, first modification of site plan, was irrigated and seeded, and you can see from the photographs, the grass is growing. But, uh, what our intention is with that area now is to regrade it and to sod it. And we have the irrigation there and, and make that complete lawn area like we have on the Sunset Avenue side. So essentially, you've got a, a lot of open space. The parish house itself, I'm gonna give you my reasons for this. The parish house itself, that was a four thousand square foot total building area, two stories. Estimated construction cost 2.3 million. We're having difficult time raising that, okay? The mikva building, on the other hand, is a thirteen hundred and sixty-five square foot, two-story building. Larger on the first floor than it is on the second. Covers eight hundred square feet of lot. That's an eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar construction cost. And there's a hundred thousand dollars of additional cost for landscaping that we want to add, including the sod. That's the component that we want to build. You know, they, uh, we've, we've raised, Rabbi, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've raised enough money to build a mikva. We've raised enough money to do some additional landscape work. But it's been increasingly difficult to raise 2.3 million dollars.
It's more. It's a lot more than that.
It's not even the parish. Right. You know, uh, the, the mikva, the, you know, one of the questions that comes to play is the use, all right? The, we are, we are still, uh, compliant with the, uh, town, with the village code as far as the religious entity, you know, it still falls under NAI CS, you know, eight, eight, eighty-one, three, one-ten. Mikva building itself is really the most religious component of the entire site, okay? The, uh, the removal of the parish house, uh, what does that do visually besides the? And I, it, it's, it's, it's kind of contradictory from when I came here the first time. We, we wanted to do this, okay, and we, we honestly did. But now you're, we're removing a, uh, building that's got eighty feet of frontage on Brook Road that's two stories high. That's gone, okay? So there's a, a major, uh, decrease in the visual impact. You've got more, uh, side area instead. The lot coverage drops down from twenty-one percent to sixteen percent. The impervious areas dramatically drops down from thirty-seven percent to eighteen percent. The stormwater management plan that we have in place took into consideration a lot of hearts, hearts, roofs, and that's already installed. And the reality of it is, we've got more stormwater management than we need right now. The parking impact is reduced because we originally needed six spaces, and now we only need two. But we provided seven, and that's a very, that's not good change. You know, in, in, in essence, what you, what you've got is, uh, campus now that has less of a visual impact, uh, is more, you, more green and, uh, it kind of falls within the, the budget that we have. We just can't raise that money. You know, I could see, you know, and I'm gonna go on the limb and say that if, I'm, I'm certain that if we were able to raise some of the money, we could find better uses for it than to build, uh, a parish house that's only gonna be used during the High Holy Days and the Sabbath and, and, and so on. So, and I know that that was one of the questions that was raised during the initial. So that's why we're here.
Well, you've gotten no discouragement on anything from this board, and, you know, we're distressed to hear that you weren't able to get your funding.
It's, it's, it's a blessing.
Okay.
Okay.
But I don't see any obstacles to reducing the coverage here. And if our experts have no objection to anything, do you have all of the technical data you need?
Yeah, I just wanna ask, the mikva building's still gonna have the dwelling unit for the attendant?
I'm sorry.
Mikva building still has the dwelling unit for the attendant upstairs?
Yes.
Is it the same exact building?
Yeah, the, the, it's the exact same, I, I should've said this. The mikva building is the exact same building that we had on the, on the northwest quadrant.
Right.
Shifted over to the, to, to the northeast. The, the only, the only difference is with the, uh, with the original design, the three buildings that we had, at the time Kyle Collins was our planning board, uh, consultant, or director, I should say. He had, because of the square footages that we had, he had suggested we separate the buildings as opposed to link them, which we did have them linked, and just connect them with breezeways, so it does look like that. Well, uh, the breezeways are gone. Uh, you don't need them, okay? The mikva building now will have a, a veranda facing Sunset Avenue, but along Brook Road. And that's gonna be our entrance. That would've been the breezeway that connected over to the, to the parish house. But now it's gonna be self-contained. And the function of the roof is, if you, if, I'm not sure if you understand how a mikva works, but, you know, it's, it, we, we mix rainwater with city water. Well, that's our, that's our rainwater reservoir, if you will. We're using that roof to go into a reservoir tank that's within the building that then, uh, gets mixed with the, with the city water to, uh, fill the immersion pool. So, uh, that's, it, it's basically the same building, Brad. Uh, it just moved over.
So we amended the resolution back in May, whatever, for breaking it up into two phases. So really just need a resolution to that, to now replace all the Phase Two is now reduced in scope and it's different. But I don't think anything changes. I don't, I don't think you're required to have public hearing, but that's up to the board, it's always.
You know, the, the other thing I'd like to add, you know, is we're still sprinkling the mikva building, okay? You know, uh, the intention was to sprinkle it a mikva and the parish house. That's, the mikva's still going to be sprinkled. It's still going to have the same code compliance that it had before, regardless of the fact that it's.
We're just dropping out the.
Right.
One building.
What are you doing with the hedge?
I'm sorry.
What are you doing with the hedge along the north side of the property?
I'm sorry, I can't.
The hedge along the north side of the property?
Yeah, well, that, that's. That's part of that hundred thousand dollar landscape thing, okay? You know, and needless to say, you know, we, we've cut back and trimmed what we can to try to get this thing rejuvenated. But there's a lot of areas that unfortunately, uh, aren't working. So that, that's part of that landscape number that I mentioned. We'll be doing something there, uh, to get it, uh, to look like Sunset Avenue's, which is much better.
And you, it may, at some time you could build that building, though, you know?
No?
No, no interest.
Okay.
Attention, chapter closed.
I don't know how I feel about this, Rabbi. Am I missing something here?
No, it's just.
Okay.
You know, Brad said it's so true, you know, when you take the step back, there's so many more worthwhile things as a congregation, as a community that we can do when channeling funds.
Well, we appreciate that. You've certainly done a great job in our community, and we're grateful.
Thank you.
And we have no doubt that, you know, whatever landscaping that you're proposing and restoring will have the same caliber of excellence that we've seen historically from. So.
I have a procedural question. I think this would just be a modification of the modification from to reduce the.
No more modifications, modifications, modifications.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so let's do it step by step. First step we'll have to do is make the determination whether a public hearing is needed.
Okay.
And we, we haven't done that many times so far, so I'll go over the categories. There's certain categories that are required to have a public hearing. There's no way this is that. It's like a new use, something that hasn't gone through a site plan before, stuff like that. Or special permit use, or there's a middle category where it is recommended. And I can, I'll read it to you, just so you know what it is. It would be new construction or additions or renovate, or additions or renovations involving an intensification of uses.
Okay.
Right? The last category is when it's not recommended by the code. Uh, ordinary repairs or minor modifications where no intensification is anticipated. So you can make that, that determination probably pretty easily, but I'll leave that to the board.
Okay, so, board members, there's no reason to have a public hearing on this?
No.
No.
Definitely not.
So we'll make a resolution to not have a public hearing first? Will you make the resolution?
Yes, make the resolution.
Okay.
And then the question really, um, is there any reason not to schedule it for a decision at the next meeting? Is there anything missing? I think your consultants are saying no.
Okay.
So.
So our resolution is actually two resolutions. One to close the hearing?
Well, there was no hearing.
Okay, right.
Voted to not have one, so.
Okay.
You can skip that.
Okay, so we're having a resolution to not have a public hearing on this? And to authorize the staff to prepare the necessary resolution for the January 11th meeting.
Correct.
Can I have that resolution?
Yeah.
I do. All in favor?
Wait, just, just so that, cause Megan's not here, go through who's making the motion for the resolution.
Rocco is making the resolution.
I'm making the motion for the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second, that, Joan, and we're all in favor of it. So we'll hold the application over until January 11th, at which time you can expect your determination. Okay, thank you.
Megan will thank me tomorrow.
Happy holidays, Brad. Thank you to see you.
Last.
There you go. Happy holidays.
All right. Seafield Lane, AJS LLC, 20 and 28 Seafield Lane. Hi, how are you?
Board members, Heather Wright, uh, for the applicant, forty-eight Eighth and Street, West Hampton Beach. Um, so this is just a, a, a simple lot line modification that is shifting the lot line from the improved lot, uh, twenty Seafield, uh, and moving it over, um, so there's a little more room on that lot. It's not changing the number of lots. It's, uh, it's still two conforming lots. So I think it's pretty simple. Um, I didn't know if the board had any comments on design or?
I don't have any.
I don't think we have any issue with you moving the lot line. Brad, we good with this?
Well, uh, lot modification requires health department approval. It's, it's like minor subdivision. It's, I do have to know. So it's, and again, this is one of those, public hearing is typically recommended, but that's up to your discretion.
Is that under the subdivision code?
Yeah.
Same thing?
Yeah, we, we.
We did that at the same time.
Language. But, uh, yeah, health department, and I, as I said, it's a type two, so you could've started with that already. I don't know. And it's just, just to bring to the board's attention, it's just a little bit of a funky design. So, I mean, it seems to me the intention was to not block the views for this house with accessory structures. I don't have a problem. It meets lot coverage, lot width, I mean, uh, lot area, lot width. That's, we just wanted you to take a look at first and make sure you're okay with that.
I did look at it.
Design.
I thought it was minor too.
One thing the health department sometimes wants is, you know, it's type two. They sometimes want the host municipality to say that. Are they asking you for that?
I don't answer to that yet. I haven't heard.
I can draft, I've drafted those before.
You have done, okay.
This, the department.
Yeah, okay.
We did it for.
You can go direct for him. So I imagine we'll take the same pathway unless the board members have something to add. We're not going to have a public hearing on this and we'll authorize, uh.
Yeah, so this is work session, so basically if you're okay with it, you just let Heather know we're okay with it. Come back with the health department approvals, and then we can do up the resolution at that point and get you back on the agenda.
Okay, so we're not going to hold you over. We'll let you complete your tasks and then come back to us.
Just so the record's complete, though, why don't you do the resolution determining that no public hearing is needed? I think that will, at least for austerity, help us when they come back with the health department.
How do I come back just? You'll sit and, uh, hold over until you make that.
Are you with Rocco?
Make the resolution.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that was easy too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Likewise. Okay, so I guess, um, the proposed letter to, about dormant applications, I guess we should technically wait for Megan to initiate her feelings on this, or are you in charge of that?
No, it's the board. I mean, it's.
I drafted a proposed letter. Um, I can tell the board what applications we would. We sort of sat down and, um, Megan and I decided, there's a lot that, because of the way our agenda used to work, where everybody used to be on the agenda unless you went through every single minute. And sometimes people just got up and said, hold us over again. So it's very hard to know when we had substantial substantive discussions about a project. But I can confirm that none of these people have been in the board in 2023. And that was a very, that was a good sort of standard for Megan and I to say, okay, you haven't been in front of us in a year.
The only, I, I, I had a question. I think I sent an email. That the only thing I wanted to know, just for clarification, is how long does it have to be dormant? How many months before they get that thirty-day letter?
Well, we're at a year now.
I mean, is it, is it?
Beyond three years.
No, what I'm, my question is, what I think to be consistent is that we pick a timeframe and say, okay, listen, you haven't been here for twelve months, or is it eighteen months or two years? Like, what's, what's that timeframe?
Well, we felt twelve months was a good basis because that's.
Think so?
Going through the health, I mean, Heather's a good example of her previous application. She's now gonna go to the health department for a subdivision. That could take, you know, it could take three months, but it could take six months. Um, but it's definitely not gonna take more than a year if you're an active applicant. So we, we sort of were, I think our, Megan and I's idea was in December of every year, this letter go, we evaluate and this letter goes out to whomever. And we remove them from the agenda without prejudice, and if they wanna come back on the agenda, they submit a new application.
Listen, I'm, I'm in favor of that. I just wanted to see that.
That triggers a whole new application if they go.
And what it's gonna do is, some of the applications where I've been drafting resolutions for Tony, we can't even, you know, the plans were submitted four years ago and we're, we're, you know, we can't even find them because there's such a long duration of time. And there's, you know, just not a consistent active. And so when you write into the resolution, it's like, you know, the plan approved in 2016 and it's two, two thousand.
Yeah, fifteen years on the gables. Fifteen years.
Well, just to be consistent, say, hey, listen, you have a twelve-month window. You, let's say you come in July, and, and now it's July twenty-four, and you haven't been here and it's dormant for twelve months, you're getting, getting a letter. But I think it should be consistent that everybody, like, all the applications are treated with the same timeframe.
Other is not.
That's, I mean, it looked like it's. Right, what I'm saying is that you've been.
What they're gonna do, try to advance it.
Right, listen, it's, it's, nothing's happened, right?
Yeah, but Rocco.
Nothing's happened for 12 months.
Rocco, if we, it's going to put us a burden on the staff to, to try to be tracking things literally every month and saying, you've hit the 12-month mark. If, if Megan and Britton look at it once a year in December, which is a pretty good time to do it, they can just capture everything within the past year that has, is over the year.
So it's end of year, take a look, end of the year? Hey, you haven't been here in 13 months.
It doesn't really matter. I think, you know, if, if it gets to the point where we're looking at this at the end of December, that being a trigger point.
Okay.
And there hasn't been any activity, for instance, in this particular case in 2023. I think this is a really good mechanism, and it doesn't add a significant burden to Megan and Britton.
No, you know, I just wanted to see something consistent, that somebody can't come back later and say, you're picking on me. You know? That, that's my point.
When we modified the policy changes, we kind of kicked around if we could put a hard number on, and I think it was problematic. And so this is kind of like a...
Yeah, well, you know, the end of the year, you look at and say, hey, they haven't been here in 11 months. They haven't been here in 13. Okay, we're sending them letters.
Some of these are fairly important projects, I mean, for the, for the village, and it, I don't know if there's any way to stimulate some incentive, maybe, but making you have to start over.
You have to start over.
Some of these are, when you go down the list, are impressive projects for our village.
There's a couple of projects that are dragging.
It's just asking them to report in.
Right.
Right, if they don't report in, that's when they're taken off the agenda without... If they report in and the board's satisfied, they're still moving forward. There's no problems here.
Or there's an issue, you come here and you state the case and...
Exactly.
And say, okay, yeah, we'll give you another six months, or whatever.
Another period.
One of the... It's a status check. And if they don't, if they're not willing to give us a status check, that's when they're going to be taken off the agenda.
And if you note in the holdover section on your agenda each month, I think it was about a month ago, I started putting the last time in parentheses at the end, is the last time we've seen that application. And you'll notice the first five applications, we don't even have a date because it's, it was so long ago.
Right.
So it's to prevent that, it's to say, oh, we looked at this on October 12th, that's still fresh in my mind. You know, it's to have an effort of good planning.
Yeah, well, there's a couple of projects...
Without big holes.
Oh, well, there's a couple of projects in town that are basically stalled.
Well, we don't know that.
And they're in visi, in high visibility spots.
I mean, there's been different issues on a number of these significant, as Larry said, applications. You know, and, and they haven't exceeded, um, the parameters that we're discussing tonight about this letter. So, I mean, it's not even worth discussing those. I mean, we all know what they are.
Right.
But, and I guess the great news is they're now identified by Britton, and, um, we'll be able to address it moving forward, and we're grateful for that. I'm grateful for that. Yeah, yeah.
I think it's a good idea.
So I don't know what actions you need from us, but I think the board is satisfied.
To confirm that you're right. To confirm you're satisfied with it.
Satisfied with the good effort, thank you, Britton. I'm sure Megan will be grateful as well and appreciate the component of this conversation. You have minutes to approve, can we approve this? I don't see any restrictions on those who is here, so we have, uh, the minutes of October 26th. I need a resolution to approve the minutes as written.
Make the resolution.
All in favor? For November 9th, I need a resolution to accept...
Make a resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I make a motion, wish everybody a happy holiday and close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody, thank you.